It is now seven thirty. Welcome to Lamoore City Council Chambers, four twenty-nine C Street, June fourth, twenty nineteen. We're gonna go ahead and go with the Pledge of Allegiance and after that, the invocation. Ready? Salute!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Pastor Ash?
Can all bow our heads and close their eyes for a homine prayer, please? Dear heavenly Father, we thank you once again for an opportunity to come in your presence, Father. We thank you that you are here amongst us, that your Holy Spirit dwells amongst us and within us. Father, we pray for guidance and for leading from you, Lord, in order that we may seek your will and that we may do your will. Father, we're not just hearers of the word, but also doers of the word. Lord, I pray for a special anointing upon this, our mayor and this council, Father, to do all that you've called them to do. Father, for what is best for the great city of Lamoore and what is in right standing with you, Father. We pray for a blessing upon this meeting tonight. And we pray these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, and all God's people, said.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Lyons?
Here.
Councilmember Blair? Mayor Pro-Ten Billingsley?
Here.
Mayor Neal?
Here.
Any approval additions and/or deletions?
Yes, Mayor, I need to pull item three dash three for a correction off the consent calendar.
Thank you. Three dash three. Okay. We'll go to public comment. Amy Ward?
Hello, everyone. We kicked off our first Rockin' the Arbor Summer Concert Series last Friday. We were a little concerned how the attendance was gonna be because, if you guys aren't aware, it was also the King's Fair. I'm really pleased to report that we had an amazing turnout. People came out, had a great time. The band August was amazing. We still have every Friday in June for Rockin' the Arbor. So if you guys are looking for something to do, it's a free summer concert. It is from six-thirty to ten-ish every Friday in June, so we hope to see you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you. David McKinney?
Hello, I'm David McKinney. This is my wife Karen. We are the owners of the new grocery outlet here in Lamoore. And we're just here to introduce ourselves and get to know the council members and let you know that we are here, we are moved in, we are residents of Lamoore. We're excited and we're very grateful for the welcoming we've received so far. Very grateful, thank you. And we have a hiring fair that you might wanna know about, July twenty-seventh. We're looking to hire about fifteen full-time people and about thirty-five part-time. So we're very excited. Karen's excited, too. And we're here. We're loving it. We plan to make this our home.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Hope for great things. We are workers and we're not unseen owners. We are owner-operators. We will be there many, many hours, both of us. Come on and say hello and enjoy your discounted groceries.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you say, are you guys open yet or no?
No, August twenty-ninth.
August twenty-ninth.
The hiring fair is July twenty-seventh.
Okay. Mrs. Daly?
Caroline Daly, two-nine-five West Berwood Lane. And I'm here to let you know that June is Alzheimer and Brain Awareness Month. A time to go purple, to show support for the thousands of people nationwide struggling with Alzheimer's or other forms of dementia. It is also a time to recognize caregivers for the unwavering support that they provide to those suffering with Alzheimer's and other dementias. On my shirt, it says, "The end of Alzheimer's starts with me," and it can continue with all of you to be aware, to keep your brain healthy, and to support those that are doing the caregiving. It's a devastating disease. My husband passed away nine and a half years ago from Alzheimer's, and I was a caregiver from the time he had to quit work, well, prior to that, but thirteen years before he passed away. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Daly. Mr. Tom Reed?
Tom Reed, ten-sixty-four, I'm from Lamoore. Mayor, council members, city manager, and city attorney. The word today is "secret." This word can be either an adjective or a noun, so here's some definitions. A secret is something that's done, made, or conducted without the knowledge of others. It's kept from the knowledge of any but the initiated or privileged. Closed mouth. It's designed or working to escape notice or knowledge. As a noun, it's something that is or is kept secret, hidden, or concealed. Some background as to why this word is so important in these chambers. On Wednesday, May twenty-second, at about eleven a.m., I was at the Cinnamon Center on business, and someone asked me if I was going to attend the luncheon with the Tachia Tribe. My response was that I knew nothing about it and that I had not been invited. About forty-five minutes later, I received a phone call at home from a Lamoore resident asking if I knew anything about the council meeting with the Tachia Tribe. Of course, my response was the same. Evidently, there was a special council meeting slash luncheon with the Santa Rosa Ranche Ria Tribal Council. There was a call to order, roll call, public comment. Of course, no public there to comment. There was a lunch show, social, council members' comments, and adjournment. Yep, sounds like a council meeting was held. So I must compliment each of you for a job well done in keeping this such a secret. I do understand that two or three members of the public became aware of this special meeting and decided to show up. There was, on May twenty-first, the day before, a regular council meeting at which not a mention of the upcoming special meeting was made. Each of the council members during the reports and requests agenda could have said something, but no. The city manager during staff reports could have said something, but no. The city attorney, who provides procedural advice to the mayor during the meeting, could have said something to the mayor, but no. And last but not least, councilmember Blair, not present this week, as she was not last week, staunch supporter of communication, could have informed her constituents on Facebook. I checked, but no. This is the most interesting part. The May twenty-first regular council meeting immediately followed a study session on ethics in government. Ironic, isn't it? Where do we go from here? Well, since this special occasion was evidently intended solely for the insiders, maybe they should pay. My suggestion is this: The total cost of this event when totaled up should be divided by seven, and each of you chip in your portion so that my tax dollars and the tax dollars of others are not used for this boondoggle. Also, I challenge each of you in turn to step from behind the dais, stand at this podium, and apologize to the residents of Lamoore for this egregious behavior to which you have been a part. I finish with a second word for today: integrity. I need not give any definitions. We should all know this one, and we know, and we all know, it was missing in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, public wanna expound on this?
Good evening. Dr. Gail Crumbs. I have to beg to differ from Mr. Reed. There was an announcement. It was made by Mr. Olson and the mayor twice in the meeting. So I have your backs. I was there, I heard it. It was also posted on the webpage for the chamber. So everyone, I don't know if everyone gets the chamber webpage, I don't know who gets that, but I do know that the meeting was announced twice in the city council meeting the day before.
Thank you. Any more public comment? I see there's none. Going on the ceremony and presentations, section one, I see there's no ceremony and presentations. Department and City Manager Report, section two, two dash one, Department and City Manager Report. Mr. Olson?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We'll start it out tonight with Frank Rivera.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I have a couple of projects to update you on. Well number fifteen, construction of the well piping is complete. Currently performing rig-based swabbing. Next, pump development, about ten days of that. And then lab sampling of the well, about three to five weeks. Well number ten, completion of the smoothing and patching of the well casing completed today. Caliper log was done, which device goes into the well and it calibrates the shape of the casing so they can build a custom liner that will be structural, will be a structural support of the existing well. So that's in the, that's in process of being made currently, and then it'll be installed. And then hopefully in July, we will, if required, we'll go out, we'll go out to bid for the technical part of the well, so.
Mr. Rivera, is, are the issues with well ten causing any water pressure concerns or anything like that?
As of, as of right now, no. Now, with the weather getting warmer, you know, we'll see, but right now, we seem to be kept keeping up with demand.
Okay, good.
Yep.
And well fifteen, what was the location on that one?
That's out by the golf course.
That's the new one that's going in, right?
Yes, south of town by the fire station.
Okay.
Yes. Questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Judy Hallwell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I just wanted to give a brief update on our trip to Las Vegas for the International Council of Shopping Centers Real Estate Convention. There were over thirty thousand attendees present at that convention. It was huge. Over a thousand exhibitors, so in three different halls, and these halls were not just like the Civic Auditorium. They were huge halls. I don't even know how many miles we walked while we were there, but it was a really great convention in that we got to talk to a lot of retailers, restaurants, developers. There were real estate developers there, brokers, different people. So we had an opportunity to go around to a lot of the booths and talk to people about Lamoore and tell them where we are. We marketed the properties that we have available, like the vacant buildings in Pioneer Square, the vacant Kmart building, the vacant land at Highway forty-one and Hanford, Armona Road, out on the west side by West Hills College, the industrial park out on Nineteenth Street, and then, of course, downtown. So we had all of those, all of that information available so that, you know, we could tell them about these places, that we would love to have them here. I, staff has put it all in a spreadsheet, so we have names and contact information for the people that are, the specific contacts for Central, the Central Valley, which that's what's important about going there. You can get on a website and try to look for information, but it's really difficult. There you go, you talk to people face-to-face, and you get their contact information. You know exactly who you need to talk to. So that was really beneficial to be there. It was, there were four of us that went. We actually had a booth this time, which was great because we were able to take some of our marketing materials and have it at the booth. And then with the booth, we were able to have four participants enter the convention. And so it was city manager Nathan Olson, myself, our planning technician, Kristy Bailey. It's important for her to go. This is the first time she was able to go, but she's been a really huge part of development in Lamoore with all of the planning, all of the development projects that come through our office. That was important for her to be there and to see that and to talk to people, and she did a great job. And then we also had Jay Salyer was part of our team, and you talked to him earlier tonight at the study session. He's with Kings County Economic Development Corporation. We also met up while we were there with Chuck Jolloyan from the Chris-Crom Company, and you heard from them earlier this evening as well. So it was a whole team effort, getting together and talking to businesses, like I said, restaurants, retailers, and hopefully something good will come of it. And I did put, and you may have already received them, some of those postcards up there with the QR codes that Jason Seegan was talking about, so I put those up there. Those are good. I did go to that website. There's not a ton of information there, but what's important is our contact information is there. And so anybody thinks about, oh, I need to contact Lamoore, I got this QR code, they can click there and find out who to talk to. It goes straight to the city manager.
And we could add to it and keep building on it, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. So it's a great start, it's a great marketing tool.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
Were there any big, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit, big takeaways from that ICSE conference or anything that, that comes to mind?
Do you know what I found interesting? We've not had a booth before. What was interesting was the amount of people that stopped in our booth that we wouldn't normally have reached out to, but people that maybe want to provide services, not necessarily come here, but want to provide services to our city. And so I thought that was beneficial in having the booth.
Sure, so this was the first year that we had a booth?
First year that we've had a booth. I've been there probably about five times.
Okay.
And this was the first time we had a booth. So it's, it's a difficult task in trying to set up meetings and everything because there's so many attendees, and everybody wants to try to set up their fifteen minutes with the Walmarts or the Targets or whoever. So you're lucky if you can get some meetings, and we actually were able to sit down with some folks. But the rest of the time, you're there and you're going from booth to booth, and we pick and choose because we know who's, realistically, who might come here to Lamoore, because we only have twenty-six thousand people, and we're not on Highway ninety-nine. So, you know, we know who we need to talk to, but there were people that we just said, let's go talk to them. They're here, we're here, let's go talk to them. You never know what's gonna happen.
Sounds very, very productive.
It was, it was. It was great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Smith?
So I gotta ask a question. I'm gonna ask, what's a QR code? Because I'm lost.
This little guy right here and the...
The black and white thing.
So you scan it with your phone and it automatically goes to the site? Is that how that works?
Yeah.
I've seen people paying at Starbucks with their phone. I'm guessing that's the same technology, but I didn't know, and I don't mind asking that question, so.
You have, you still have an answer machine at home?
Uh, no, I don't.
And a VHS.
To you?
No, I don't.
I don't. I didn't know what it was, so thank you for, yeah, the education on that. Good evening, Mayor, council members. This past Friday, we had our annual PAL golf tournament, and we had a huge turnout. Twenty-seven teams entered. We had offered our, you know, participation opportunities for volunteers, and we had over twenty volunteers show up. The volunteer fire department came out and cooked dinner for, or lunch for a hundred and forty people. They did a bang-up job. I gotta thank those guys again. They volunteered their time, left their place of business to come over here. Oh, hey, chief, how are you? Anyway, but big thanks to that group. It was, it was an amazing turnout. I wanna thank all of our sponsors, our donors, again, our volunteers. The golf course looked phenomenal. If you haven't been out there a while and haven't had an opportunity to play golf, but the course is in great shape. Tom Ringer and his staff at the golf course, they went out of their way to make that a special event, so big thanks to them. And again, our community never ceases to amaze me at the response that we get when we have an event to raise money for at-risk kids. And all of these proceeds go to at-risk youth in our community. We're up to three programs now. We have our wrestling program, we have our CrossFit Kids program, and now we have an after-school tutoring program with a lot of our volunteers in the police department that go and they use their former education skills to help our youth with their homework and, and things like that. And then, most importantly, you know, the mentors that these kids receive from our officers and the coaches that volunteer their time to not only teach them the sport, but they teach them about life, and they teach them about, you know, leadership, and we can never start too early when it comes to leadership. And, you know, mentoring starts at all levels. It takes a village to raise a community, and I truly believe that. The next phase, and I may not be here to carry that out, but we wanna get more parental involvement in those type of activities. So I'm trying to brainstorm how we can, you know, incorporate that into the next phase of the PAL program. So, big thanks to everyone involved, and again, big thanks to the volunteer fire department. They were amazing. Now they set the bar high for next year, so hopefully I can be out there and help them with the barbecue next year. I'll provide the cigars, chief, again.
All right.
Anyway.
Greatly appreciated.
Yeah, and thank you.
Thank you.
Chief German, did you have anything for tonight?
No, I don't, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
The following meeting.
Okay. So a few updates for me. One, there is a special meeting tomorrow night here at five-thirty to go over the budget, the proposed budget to council, so that is here tomorrow at five-thirty p.m. Jack-in-the-box, a lot of calls on Jack-in-the-box. They submitted for some renovations and upgrades to the restaurant. Normally, they stay, normally when we get these requests, the restaurant stays open. Not in this case. They fenced it off and shut it down, so they're not leaving, they're not going anywhere, they're just upgrading, and they'll be back open soon. And I have a couple, we have a couple staff members out tonight. Jason Glick and Michelle are attending graduation party this evening, so that's why they're absent, but I'm sure they really wish they could be here. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to consent counter, section three. Three dash one, approval minutes, regular meeting, May twenty-first, twenty nineteen. Three dash two, approval minutes, special meeting, May twenty-second, twenty nineteen. Three dash four, approval letter of confident of the Kings County Local Hazard Mitigations Plan update. Do anybody in the public want to talk about that? Okay, back to the council. Could I get a motion or do you guys wanna expound on it?
Make a motion to approve.
Yes, I got it. I didn't even, I didn't even...
It was pulled earlier under the additions and deletions. It has been pulled.
I didn't even call it out. Thank you, though. I got a motion by Mr. Brown.
Second.
A second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Now we're gonna go to three dash three.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I asked to pull this item. I had a typo on there. When I wrote the staff report, I put effective August first. It should've said September first. So I just, I pulled the item for the correction. The city clerk has the updated resolution with September one on it. That is the correction. Thank you.
Okay, I don't wanna leave Mr. Reed out. Did you wanna expound on that, sir? Open to the public.
If mention of the special meeting was made at the previous council meeting, I did not hear it, and I sincerely apologize for any comments that I made. Mayor and council members, at the previous regular council meeting, the members present consented to consider changing the council meetings from twice to only one per month. I naively thought the issue would be brought forth in a study session to fully discuss the issue. However, it went straight to the consent calendar. It seems the council has already decided to make this change. Where to begin? I have been attending the council meetings for a number of years, and there have always been two meetings per month, with exceptions for taking the month of August off and not holding the second monthly meetings in November and December for holidays. While I recognize that all of you have families and lives outside these chambers, when you ran for the position of council member, you did so with the knowledge that the schedule was two meetings per month with exceptions, as has been the case likely for decades. Also, the number of meetings each month was not an issue during your election campaigns. The first, whereas in the resolution states that Tuesday meetings will be canceled, but that meetings will continue on Tuesdays. I think some wording needs to improve there. The second, whereas states that the new meeting schedule would be conducive to providing effective and efficient services to the public. If this is the case, why not once every two months? Or even once each quarter? Imagine how efficient that would be. The agenda could be made public a month in advance, everyone would come to the meetings totally prepared, and we can zip through them in no time. By reducing the number of meetings, we will also be reducing the monthly stipend paid to the council members? Probably not. A big problem with only one meeting per month is the agenda will likely be much longer. There will be more items on the consent calendar, so that someone can request that all items be pulled for further discussion, and we all know how much of those, most of those discussions go with no comment. There could also be more than one item for a public hearing, and there will likely be more items of new business, to say nothing about public recognition. So if the regular council meetings will continue to begin at seven-thirty, you might get home in time to catch the late news. This resolution will greatly reduce the amount of public comment, effectively cutting my time and that of others, members of the public, to only three minutes of public comment time per month, instead of the current level of six minutes total. In addition, should something happen during a council meeting that we, the members of the public, believe should be addressed at the next public comment time, we will now have to wait four or five weeks instead of the current two or three. I can also envision an increase in the number of special meetings, so the total number of meetings may not decrease at all. Special meetings may also be held during normal working hours, thereby making it extremely difficult for a large segment of the Lamoore populace to attend. This topic needs a lot of discussion before you consider acting on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any other members from the public? If there's none, coming back to the council? Any of you guys wanna speak on this?
I, I believe that, I was the guy who brought it up, you know? The time I thought that it was a good idea to do this, try to make things more efficient. You know, we do have special meetings. We can have special meetings. The biggest thing is to get those publicized, get those out, you know? But, that's about it. I don't, that's it. I don't have much more to say on that.
I'll jump in. To your, to your point, Mr. Brown, I know there has been some very short agendas out there, so I think if, if there is a possibility that, that we need to have a meeting, we could always do that. But I see your point, I also see your point, too, Mr. Reed, but, but I think if it is necessary to have a meeting, we could always hold one. And will there be more special meetings? I'm not sure. I couldn't answer that question for you, but, but I do think this is the right direction for the city to go at this time. And I'll leave it at that.
And if I may say another thing, a comment, that if, if we find out that this doesn't work, we can change it back very easily, okay? Because we're not changing the ordinance. We're just putting in a resolution to see if this is gonna work. If it doesn't work, we can change it back. With the next council, they can change it. It ends with the next council, with the next council in 2020, when the new council comes onboard. So, you know, I think that if, if, once again, it, we can save staff time, we can save, you know, dollars without. The biggest thing is, 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 we'll not, we'll not, do not wanna, do not wanna take away the voice of the public. If it does that, I'll, I'll come back and vote that we put it back up. You know, we, we put it back the way it was. You know, I'll make, you know, but I don't know. Leave it at that.
Yeah, I agree with, you know, both what Chad and Mr. Brown have said over here. Sorry, Mr. Billingsley.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. But, Mr. Reed, I do agree with you, too, and I see your point, and you have, you do have a point. But like Chad said, Mr. Billingsley said, I think this is the better way to go, considering the fact that in 2020, it goes back to the regular two meetings a month.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, when staff was directed to do this, the spirit in writing it would be that if we did special meetings, we'd probably still hold those on the first Tuesday of the month, kinda in line with how we've done things. The intent is not to have them during business hours and keep the public out, I can assure you of that. And then additionally, I do have an open-door policy, Mr. Reed, to anybody in the community. If you wanna come down and sit and talk about things, I am more than welcome to accommodate anybody from the public that wants to come and discuss city business, and then I can... and then I can pass that along to council members. You can call your, your representative on your own as well. And then additionally, one thing, you mentioned the stipend. You know, this is just a little bit of what this council does. I can attest that there's times we spend hours a day on the phone with these gentlemen that make, and ladies that make up our council. So this is just kinda the end game, but there's a lot that goes on in the background. And honestly, I, I would argue that the little bit of stipend we pay them is, is probably not even enough, you know? So they're doing it, they're not doing it for the money, let's put it that way, and I appreciate the support and what they've given us. Nobody's getting rich off the stipend.
This feels like my second volunteer job.
Yeah, so, it, it really is. Plus all the boards they sit on, those haven't been cut at all, so, um, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm bringing it back to the council. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve three, three with the modification of September 1st.
Got a motion.
I'll second. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Billingsley.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Billingsley. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
And I will aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, going to public hearing, section four. Four dash one, planning units development, number 2019 slash 01, to request by Woodside Homes for a planning unit development in the existing Ritzman East Residential Subdivision that would allow the maximum five-foot side yard setback for two-story homes instead of the standard 10-foot maximum side yard setback. Former APN 023 slash 020 slash 010, sequa determinate, uh, sequa determination category exempt, class five, ordinance 2019 slash 22, right? And that would be minimum. Five foot.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and council members. This item is being brought to you on request by Woodside Homes. They've asked to reduce their five-foot, their, their side yard setbacks to five feet on not only the single-family homes, the single-family home, the, the single-story homes are already at five feet on each side yard. Thank you. And what they're asking for is that the two-story homes also be at five feet side yards. So our municipal code right now says that a two-story home has to be in an additional five feet on each side, so 10 feet on each side, for each story. So if it was three feet, another five feet. So, let me, oh, I need this. There we go. So this project was brought to the planning commission and council back in 2016. The subdivision has already been approved, it's already under construction, there's houses being built, there's already some homes that have already been sold. And so, we're not here to ask about approval of this project. The project's already been approved. It's only the, the side yard setbacks that we're talking about. The only mechanism that we had to allow this is to come before you requesting a planned unit development. So the only item that they are requesting in this planned unit development is the side yard setback. The project, if you're not familiar with it, it's out by the Kings County Office of Education, out on East D Street, at where Bush Street ends into it, it turns into Daphne Lane to the north, and that is where the subdivision is being built right now. And that shows you a picture of it. Oops, go back. So this is East D Street, that's Bush Street, and then it turns into Daphne Lane, and here's the project. So as I mentioned, the application was submitted by Woodside Homes. It's, the side yard setback's currently five feet, but for two-story, it's 10 feet. This request would allow for a five-foot setback for the two-story units. The reason why they are requesting this is because their two-story home fits already on the lot with the 10-foot side yard setbacks. But some of the people that have come to them would like the two-story unit, but would like to add a garage on, a third car garage. That doesn't fit on several of the lots. So they've thought, well, let's, let's bring this to planning commission and council and see if you're agreeable to it. Also, there are homeowners that like to have additional width on one side of the house, on the garage side, where they could drive up their driveway and put an RV or a travel trailer or a boat or something on the side of their house. With only 10 feet, that makes it very, very tight and maybe not possible. So they're requesting this for, for the two reasons. The third car garage, if the homeowner wants it, or additional side space for, you know, to, to go on the side yard. The people that have already purchased homes in that subdivision were notified of this public hearing. They were given the, a public hearing notice. So we wanted to make sure that the people that already purchased the lots would be aware that this is going on. And so, they know about the meeting, so we'll open it up to a, a public hearing after I'm finished here to, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak on that. They do know about this meeting. So the recommendation, this item went to the planning commission first, because that's the normal process. They heard this on May 13th, and they voted in favor to recommend to city council to approve this item. So the recommendation number two is that city council should approve the first reading tonight of the ordinance number 2019 dash O2. Approval of the ordinance does two things. Well, you, you're approving the planned unit development with that ordinance, and then you would pass it on to a second reading. And that's, that's all I have for you. The, there is one other case that I know of, and there might be more, where we've allowed less than 10 feet on two-story homes. And that's, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Anniston Place. That is also on East D Street. It was a Wathen development. Anniston Place, but then back behind it, we refer to it as Anniston Place North. It's now called, what is it called? I wrote it down. It's, it was sold as Atherton. It's at Smith and D, in that location. That, that one was approved with a four-foot side yard. So in between...
For a two-story home?
For all the units, yes.
Is, is there two-story homes in, in there?
Yes, they're almost all two-story.
All right.
So there's only eighteen, eight feet in between the housing units, and there's a fence in between at four feet. It's tight. It, it looks like maybe townhomes, like, like that would look. So there are people that wanted those homes. They, they purchased them right away, because they liked not having a lot of yard to have to maintain. So there is a market for that type of unit. Like I say, this isn't gonna reduce the lots any. It's just going to manipulate how the house is set on the lot. So it's really up to you whether you want to see a housing subdivision with two-story housing units at a five-foot side yard setback.
Is, is there a reason why that they have a 10-foot setback on the side yards for a two-story home? I, I'm thinking on public safety type of stuff, and if you have a two-story building, God forbid it catches on fire, and if you have 10 feet away, another two-story building, the radiant heat alone will catch that next building on fire.
Yeah, I'm not sure why it was in our municipal code to be 10 feet, maybe for that reason. But I know that the state of California really likes to see homes right next to each other. So it's not unheard of to have housing units setback five feet.
Okay.
And, and in other cities, you know, they're right next to each other. Any other questions?
I'm just saying, the, uh, the code required is 10 feet, right?
Yes, that's correct. For two-story units.
And you guys want to reduce it to five feet?
Yes.
Will that be consistent throughout the whole subdivision?
Throughout the whole subdivision, although not every lot would require it, because there's enough space on, on many of the lots.
It would just be an option?
It would just be an option.
If you wanted the three-car garage?
Correct. Or, or additional side space on the garage side. So not the third garage, but just having space in order to drive an RV or something back there.
Okay.
During a planning commission meeting, was there a lot of opposition? Was there any opposition? Cause...
There was no comment.
No comment?
There was no comment.
Has there been any written opposition or anything to your office, to anybody?
None.
Uh, nothing?
Nothing. And, and you can ask, I'm not sure if there's anyone here, but you're gonna...
Well, yeah, we have to go to public hearing.
Okay.
Open it to public hearing.
Tom Reed, 1060, for having me live more. I'm, I'm just curious, on the two-story then, is there a 10-foot setback currently on both sides?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would give you 20 feet between two.
And on the one-story, there's five feet on each.
Yep.
Side. Okay. Thank you.
I'm wondering if that's because of earthquake, if there has to be a, a larger distance. That's the only thing I can figure out. Does anybody know the, the answer to that?
I don't think that it has to be at 10 feet. I think that's just what our municipal code has.
Okay.
Because if it was required to be at 10 feet, we probably wouldn't be able to even ask for it. So I believe that it's, it was just the, our, I believe our code used to be five feet on one side, 10 feet on the other for, for a single-story home. And then we changed it at one point to now where it's five and five. So it changes periodically. They decided to keep that 10 feet for two-story unit, but it's not mandatory. It's not... I mean, Frank could speak to this. I don't believe, it's not a building code, California building code, that it has to be that way. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to modify that.
Like on Smith and D Street, they're obviously pretty close.
Correct. They're four feet. And they're almost all two-story units. They might all be, but...
Okay.
There's a lot.
You got something, Dad?
Yeah. I don't believe the building code, uh, it's not a building code, uh... Building code allows it. I think once you get less than three feet, then you have to eliminate windows, door, door openings. With the introduction of fire sprinklers now, uh, I think more developers are wanting to, to cram the property line more. So fire sprinklers, you know, is, are not designed on commercial buildings, but they are designed to put the fire out, whatever, when they're in. So, I guess, for the building code, um, if I could...
All right, thanks, Frank.
Thank you, Frank. And, and Chief just pointed out, he looked it up, and the building code actually states that you, any single-family unit can be six feet apart from another unit. So...
Regardless of story.
Right. So they only need a three-foot, single-family home. It doesn't point out, it doesn't say anything different for two-story. So they can be only three feet to the, the property line.
Right on. I couldn't walk in my side yard at three feet, I wouldn't fit.
I have a question. Fire chief, do you have any...
Council, council, before we ask questions, we should finish the public hearing.
Let's go.
Sorry.
No, thank you.
Any further comments? Close public hearing, back to council.
Uh, take it back to fire chief. You have any good, bad, happy, sad on this?
You know, uh, I can just go by my personal deal, and I think Nathan's in the same boat right now. Right now, where we live, and Chad also, sorry, councilman Billingsley. We have a five-foot side, it's, our other side is 10 feet, is that correct?
I believe so, somewhere.
I, yeah. And it, it's pretty tight.
Mm-hmm.
And I told myself that if we ever got in trouble back there, that we're gonna be limited, one person, one hose. You know, a lot of times we like to, we say surround and drown.
Mm-hmm.
But when it's tight that way, it's, it's pretty tough to do. You know, I, I mean, it's, it would be one time in 10 years. But it is, it, it, on our, on our end, that would be, be a little shaky. That's about all I can say.
Thank you. Any comments from council?
This is a little bit tough. The planning commission didn't really have a recommendation or a, or a comment, it sounds like.
No, they recommended to approve.
They recommended to approve?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh...
It was unanimous.
Oh, okay. Well...
Commissioner Mead, I believe, recused himself because he owns property in the, in the area.
Okay.
Not in that subdivision, but surrounding area.
Okay. I, I personally don't have a problem with it. There's already homes in Lamoore that, that have that. And if somebody wants to add a third garage, I don't want to be the one that stops them.
I'm looking at what Chief said is safe haven, as far as for the fire department. I want to look at that as well, you know what I mean? It might, people might want this or want that, but we gotta look at what's safe if we have a fire. And it's, it's kinda like a tough situation here. Cause you, you're looking out for the fire department, you're looking at for the people, and all the above, so...
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, that was, I was curious if that's why it was 10 feet. If that was, you know, originally, I, 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 man, I don't know these things either.
I don't know.
I was just...
I think it was just a preference for more space on lots. But I know that the state has changed their thinking, and they don't like urban sprawl, and they don't like large lots. They look on that unfavorably. When I've been to meetings like CDBG, the Community Development Lot Grant Committees and from the state of California, so, um, but it's really up to you, you know? You and your constituents, and what you think is best for the community of Lamoore.
And this has to go to a second reading, right?
Yes.
So the people will have time, okay?
Yes.
So this is our, are we gonna get a consent, or would that be a motion? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve, so it can go to second reading.
Mr. Brown gave a motion. Could I get a second?
Could, Mr. Brown, are you also waiving the reading of the ordinance in its entirety? So to approve, the motion is to approve the first reading, waive the reading of the ordinance in, in its entirety, and moving it to a second reading?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, second by Mr. Billingsley. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
I will aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
New biz, no new businesses, okay, we're going to city council reports and requests, section six, six dash one. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, um, just a couple things to brief out. May 29th, attended the San Joaquin Valley Special City Selection Committee for the San Joaquin Valley Smoke Air Board, nominated, uh, he has the position now as a board member. Councilmember Presidio, uh, Presado of Avonel, he's on that board now. Attended to K-CAG, CART, LAFCO meetings last month, really nothing to brief out. I do want to state something about the Alzheimer's dementia, June, you know? Thank you for coming up and stating something about that. We have generations right here in Lamoore, and that's what they do. They work with people that have Alzheimer's and dementia. They're a daycare for, so the families, the caretakers can go out and, 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 you know, go shopping, things of that nature. It's a great program we have here. Stuart, he's on the board that, that oversees that. Kings County, thank you for doing that. Kings County Commission on Aging. But, uh, you know, I don't think a lot of people know that's what we have here in Lamoore, and it's ginormous. I think they, what do they got, 17, probably 15, 17 people over there. They take care of daily. So, um, so, and then, um... That's, that's about it. I just want to thank everybody for being here. Thanks, PD, more volunteer fire department staff, everybody for all your hard work, especially with the PAL. Fundraiser, that was ginormous. And, uh, thank Chamber for all your hard work too. It's a team effort. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So I've got from the Kings County Commission on Aging, they're having their annual friendship day, and it's gonna be a senior luau. It'll be Friday, June 7th, tomorrow, no, this coming Friday. No, this coming Friday. Yeah, I, I, for some reason, I thought it was Thursday. Anyways, just kidding. It's going to be from nine to two at the Hampton Civic Auditorium. They're going to have a raffle, music, dancing, and Elvis, Elvis is going to be there. I don't know how they found him, but, um... Lunch will be at noon, and they'll have donations, so, if you guys want, go dancing. Yeah, man. And I also would like to say, uh, sorry to anyone that thought the, the meeting the other day with the tribal council was a secret. I'm here to tell you it was not. I set up for it. I asked Bruce if we could have it at the Fire Department. We had it at the Fire Department. I set up tables and chairs for anywhere from thirty to fifty people to show up. Had drinks and food for about the same amount of people, and unfortunately, only about five people showed up other than the tribal council and the five of us, six, seven of us. I will say, it was a, it was a good meeting. It felt really good. Uh, we had good conversation. Things went well. I kind of think that that was the first that that's happened in a while, if I'm not mistaken, correct? Yes?
Yes.
So... And thanks to the PD for letting us barbecue for them.
You're welcome.
Yeah, yeah, that felt good. That's all I got.
Mr. Billingsley?
First off, the new mosquito abatement building is getting close to coming to an end, so, um, I did attend a meeting two weeks ago, and, and that was the topic of conversation. Also, I wanted to thank the PAL program. I know that, that you guys are making a big impact with the kids, and if anybody missed the opportunity to donate to you guys, I'm sure they can get ahold of Chief Smith up here, and, and they'd be happy to have a, um, a donation and, and keep doing what they're doing with the kids, because I know it's, it's making a big impact. Also, I was very happy to see the two new owners of Grosiala here tonight and bringing their positive energy into Lamoore. I think we need more of that, so if you guys have any friends, tell them to come on down to Lamoore.
Bring your friends, yeah.
And thank you, guys. I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you. I just want to say to Chief, Police, and Fire Department, and the people, thank you guys for coming out here. Thanks for the support, and I want to thank the council, all of us doing what we had to do, working together as a council, and, um, it's now eight.